Yes.
Ready down there, John, you ready?
We're on it.
Gentlemen.
Chris.
All right, the city commission workshop, call to order. Please silence your cell phones. Carrie, if you would, good timing. If you would, call the roll, please.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Commissioner Colode.
Here.
Commissioner Sachs. Thank you.
All right, we'll begin with public participation. I will give you a heads up, though, you can listen to this whole meeting and then when we kick off the next meeting, there's another shot for public participation, so you can also chime in there, but any member of the public wish to speak this meeting, seeing none, we'll close public participation. And believe Callid.
Um, yes, um, we have with us Mark Galvin and Angela Singleton. The purpose of this presentation is to talk about the general obligation financial options. I think we have discussed with you previously on some of the options that we staff presented along with Mark. We'll have Mark give you the presentation and then we'll be more than happy to ask any questions that you might have.
Okay. By the record, my name is Mark Galvin. I'm with Top Securities, financial advisor to the city. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to talk to you today, kind of give you an idea of the financing plan, preliminary finance plan we're putting together, get your input on it. We have a little bit of a recommendation in the back end, but probably the most important thing that we're looking at, and I'm gonna flip a little quickly on here, is on page three, or page, yeah, page two. Page, excuse me, page two, having to do with the opportunity that you have in front of you, is that obviously the voters approved fifteen million dollars for the purpose, can you hear me fine?
Yep.
Okay. Is that you, the voters approved up to fifteen million in debt for financing acquisition along the Turnpike Creek.
Yeah.
And so currently, the city has an opportunity to be able to purchase a piece of land for approximately nine point five million, in which they also expect to have the opportunity to be able to get a grant of about three point six. So the question is, like as far, and it's supposed to be in September, that you need to go ahead and purchase that. So one of the key items as we move forward in the general obligation is setting the millage rate associated with the financing. Well, there's really kind of a couple of questions or options that you have available to you. One is to just issue the nine point five million and go ahead and to estimate the interest rate as far as the, for the millage rate. The second is to consider whether or not you're going to issue additional debt or purchase additional land within the next two to three years. Staff, based upon some conversations that we've had, feels that right now, realistically, you guys feel that maybe approximately this land might be the first phase, but when you do the second and third phase, you know, is to be discussed. So, but my thought here is that last thing you want to do is issue nine and a half million today, and then you find out that gee, guess what, next year you want to turn around and issue another, you know, the remaining five point five million. And then you incur more additional cost. So, you know, one of the items that we'll discuss later on is maybe a recommendation to be able to see if you decide that's the direction that you're not sure yet, is possibly turn around and go out for an RFP that includes both options, so you can make a decision in August thirteenth. I was going to also go through the discussion a little bit as far as some of the methods of sale, and based upon timing, and also the length of the maturity, and the amount, what type of financing option that you have available to you. Sometimes now, probably kick in, that sometimes I'll say private placement, I might slip out bank loan. A private placement is a direct placement with the bank traditionally. You go out through an RFP process, you negotiate it, just like a loan, however, the actual evidence itself will be a bond that will be placed with the bank. So if you hear me accidentally slip out loan, what I mean is a direct placement with the bank that's evidenced by a bond. Traditionally, in my group too, we talk about a capital market offering. Sometimes we use the word bonds, just because traditionally that's what we call it. Bonds are, are sold into capital markets, they're done either through an underwriter, directly under our competitive sale. So it's going out into the capital markets versus being placed with the bank. They have different types of requirements associated with it. Another thing about a private placement, or quote, if it's a bank loan, is that one is such a security, it's subject to anti-fraud requirements, which would be a bond issue. A private placement bank loan is not. So those are all, just little things to keep in mind when talking about some of the different opportunities associated with it.
Could you just expand on that a bit more, why, why that might, I mean, I don't know why that would be, what does that mean?
Okay, well, a bank loan, or a bank loan or a direct placement that's not a security, is that because it's going to, it's not a security, it's not subject to the SEC. If it's subject to the SEC, the SEC and cannot regulate the city's debt. They can only, they can only do securities. So if you do a loan, then you're not subject to, quote, anti-fraud provisions that would be associated. When you do a bond issue, or a capital markets issue, you are indeed, it's a security and you're subject to anti-fraud. Just, just something simple, if there's a teeny bit of liability, but that is one of the nuances between a bank loan slash private, um, direct placement and a security, a bond issue. Not that big of a deal, but it's just something that, one, you are being somewhat controlled or reviewed by the SEC.
Okay.
I wouldn't expect that you guys would do anything anti-fraud, but I'm just...
I guess that's why I brought it up, is because, you know, I just don't want there to be any misconception to the, to the general public, that we would choose one of the, one over the other because of that provision, like that really, to me...
That's just a piece of information that's out there.
We're good on both counts, yeah, okay.
Okay, um, like, when we talk about a direct placement with the bank, one of the convenience of it is that you go out for an RFP, you set the terms that you want, you have the, the banks bet on it, and you set the parameters. One of the other benefits of a bank loan is that traditionally, you can also ask for them to hold that interest rate for about, between thirty to forty-five days. Why is that important? Is that you're not taking interest rate risk. So you, you know, they'll turn around and they'll come out and say, hey, I'm gonna do it for three percent, I'm willing to hold that for forty-five, we're able to come from you and tell you exactly what's going on, knowing that that is going to be the interest rate that you're going to be charged. So that's one of the benefits. Also, you're negotiating the terms and conditions, prepayment penalty, if any, what other covenants or requirements you negotiate directly with the bank, so when we bring it to you, it's basically completed. A bond issue is a little bit more complex, because it's a security. Because it's a security, it's going to end up needing an official statement, which allows investors to be able to know everything about the city for them to make a reasonable investment decision. In addition, bonds are rated, so we go to the rating agencies associated with it. And also, that's one of the reasons that it has more cost, and it also has a longer time period, because it takes more time to go through that whole process. One of the beautiful parts about a bond issue, though, is that traditionally, they'll go up to thirty years, you go with longer amortization versus a bank. Banks are traditionally shorter term life, because banks don't like to go out and lock in for a long time. Although I will say in this market, there are, we did get indications of rates from banks that were going to go ahead and lock into the full twenty years for a fixed rate. And in a few minutes, you're gonna see that summary table where you can probably look at and say, gee, one, a bond issue looks a little bit better than a bank loan. Be honest with you, I try to be conservative on the bank loan. I know the bond market, I can nail that down pretty good. In today's market, I can't nail down with the bank loan, because twenty years is that kind of area that is a little bit tougher for them to be able to, some will be in it, some won't. Kind of talked about the bond issue, once again, it's because it's capital markets, it can be, depending on the, the ratings and everything, can be extremely cost effective, especially when you go out long term, because you're able to amortize that additional cost over a longer period of time. One of the negatives, so, I was on a bond issue, though, is that the prepayment penalty is usually ten years, although now it's getting a little shorter. So you, and under the new requirements, is that you can't do advance refundings, you'd have to wait ten years before you could call, um, do refinances of bonds. And by the way, if I'm talking too fast or whatever, please feel free to count, interrupt.
I did want to go back, because that, that point you just mentioned, comparing the bond versus the, the bank loan is, that's a key point, because as we debate what to do and whether or not to do the full fifteen million, and, so on the bank slide, I saw that it was, basically, you, you negotiate it, and that, that's the beauty of the bank loan, is it's negoti, all these terms are really negotiable. I saw, I think, on slide three, I think I saw the asterisk, so typically three years or...
Yeah, let me, let me explain that. First of all, what we plan on doing if we go with the, some type of direct placement with the banks, is that we ask them for their prepayment provisions. We traditionally tell them that we would like the ability to prepay at any time. With that, any times you set certain parameters, there might be a slight cost. So, realistically, you would not want to prepay the loan. And this, and let me try to rephrase this a little bit, is that, all right, let's say you issue the full fifteen million, and then you, and you had reasonable expectation at the time in which you entered into the bonds, to be able to issue the full fifty. At the end, let's say the end of third year, you might say, guess what, guys, you know, there's no more land here, no valuable land over here, I've got excess proceeds, then we can turn around and have a provision that allows you to prepay the bonds. And most banks will do it without penalty, if they know it's from excess proceeds. It'd be different if they said, hey, guess what, we're gonna refinance it, so we're gonna, you know, we don't want you to do that, but if it's from excess proceeds. And the reason I take three years, is that gives you an opportunity to have a better feel of whether or not you're actually going to be gonna spend that money or not.
And that's the bond?
That's the, that's the bank loan. That's the bank loan. Bonds, there's...
Bank loan, private placement, direct placement, whatever you want to go. You work with the bank, you pretty well tell them, we want flexibility. If you do a bond issue, or capital markets issue, then what you have is that bondholders are saying, at the time we buy the bonds, you're telling them, I'm not calling those bonds for any reason until ten years from now.
Yeah.
So they want to have protection, that they're gonna get that yield for at least ten years.
I understand, thank you.
And that's one of the reasons that they get a much lower yield, you get a much better lower yield, because they know that they're getting certain protections associated with their investment.
Yeah. In the, in that scenario where you use excess proceeds, let's say after three years, you pay, you, you pay out back some, prepay some, would you typically see an adjustment to the amortization schedule, or is it just, it shortens the, the end?
Well, banks would prefer that you just chop it off on the back end.
Yeah.
What we will put into the RFP is that for prepayment associated with excess proceeds, that the debt will be amortized on a pro rata basis.
Yeah, okay.
So the interest rate stays the same, it's just that you're gonna slice off...
Yeah.
...the debt service on a pro rata basis, basically be amortizing.
Right, right, okay.
Now, once again, on a, some banks, although it's changing a little, because it's really kind of a buyer's, or actually, it's a seller's market...
Yeah.
...where traditionally, they might only have a seven or a ten-year fixed in interest rate, they might now go up to twenty. I mean, it's, that's the interesting thing about a, a bank loan, two, different banks, based upon their desire to do business with the city, you don't know what you're gonna get, I mean...
Their desire to fill in a hole in their portfolio, I mean, it's...
They love the credit, they wanna do more business here, they, whatever, they got offices. I've given up trying to figure out how people do their business, I just, I don't look to get towards an amount.
Yeah, yep.
When you look at this schedule, once again, I've tried to be conservative more on the bank loan. I know what the bond market is, I've kind of, so to a certain point, when you see that a bank loan financing is slightly higher, I'm estimating, because we're at that twenty year period, that I think banks are gonna be a little lower, but I can't guarantee it. So, one suggestion you'll see in a few minutes, if you, because of timing, one thing, because you need the money by, by September the sixth, I believe it is, we go with a bank loan, and if you want to do the full amount, we can give an option for twelve, I mean, for fifteen million, and we can do it for nine and a half million, you can make your decision at that point. The only issue that you have right now is you're sitting here not to exceed millage, so if that's the option that you're gonna do, then you're gonna need to grab one of the higher fifteen million millage rate. Do you have any questions on this slide here? Yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, please. On the bank loan, do they have the right to change the rate?
And, and I'm gonna use the word it depends. And the reason I'm using the word depend, is that, like I said, some banks will go ahead, I'm, hopefully, we're gonna hear a bank that says, we're gonna give you that rate for twenty years and it's not gonna change. Other ones can say, I can go out twenty years, I can give you a twenty-year amortization, but I can't lock in an interest rate for a full twenty years. So what I'll do is that I'll lock it in for whatever, let's say it's fifteen years, they'll keep that rate the same for fifteen years, and then they'll have to tell you that, I don't, I'm gonna do the market rate at that time, so if interest rates are higher or lower. Basically, you're locked in through that locked in period. After that, you're at market risk.
Is the message I'm receiving now, that you might prefer us to go to bonds, being that you understand them better? And my, the second part to my question is, what offers more security for the city and the taxpayer, which would be the way to go in your opinion?
Okay, first of all, as far as, all I don't know, on, I mean, I do, I've done massive amount of bank loans, so, you know, I'm extremely comfortable with it. The only thing I'm telling you right now is that in this market, if you're going out twenty years, I can't tell you exactly what the interest rate would be, because I don't know how the banks are thinking. I've got indication rates associated with it. The other benefit of a bank loan itself, is that you can do that fast. It gives you the flexibility, from what staff has told me, is that you want the ability to prepay and not wait ten years, and that you need the money by, in September. A bond issue is not going to get that. Also, if you're only going to borrow, definitely if you're going to be borrowing nine and a half million, a bank loan just makes more sense. Even though you're seeing the numbers, it definitely makes more sense. If, and to a certain point, until you get the interest rate, it might even be better to go the full amount. But, I mean, the only reason I'm saying that is that I, interest rates are extremely low, and if we can get a great rate, then, then I'd say, it's easy for me to say, grab the full amount. But to do that, you're gonna have to increase your trim notice, and, and you won't, you can obviously adjust it when we come back to you August thirteenth and we got the results. Then you might say, hey, I don't wanna go, you know, these rates aren't really that great that I wanna lock in for, for, for twenty years. Let's just go ahead and do the nine and a half million. I mean, you'll have that option, I'll come back to you and show you what we've got from the banks, and then I'll make a recommendation, but ultimately, what it comes down to is what you guys feel comfortable with.
And Clayton, add a couple of things to that, because you, you mentioned about the, the security and what's best for the, for the public. I mean, in this case, we're really the risk, actually, the city's the risk. So, the, once we, as long as we get an apples-to-apples fixed rate in both cases, bond market or private offering, bank note, whatever you call it, once we get that rate locked in, then that's the security for the, for the ratepayers, that's the security for the citizens. This is what you will be paying, this, I mean, just like when you get your home mortgage, as long as you can adjust the mortgage, then you're okay. And in many cases, the bank note is exactly the same thing. It's kind of like shopping for credit card offerings, and this is what he was alluding to, that you never know, and I'll tell you, we did one of these at, one of my previous employers, and we went with a private placement, and when we got the RFP results back, you rack and stack them, and there were banks that were clearly pricing themselves out of the market, because it just wasn't something they wanted to touch. And then there was one that was like, we didn't know how they were even doing it, and they were just an outlier to our benefit. And when it boiled right down to it, they were trying to get into our market segment, they were trying to open a presence in our area, they wanted the connection, they wanted the logo, you know, there were things they were looking for, and they were willing to basically give us a better deal to make sure they won that, that deal. And so, when he's saying he doesn't know, it's because in the, on the public side, every day, right now, there's someone going into the public segment. So he can pull up a report and tell you, hey, here's ten cities that have gone in, here's the rate they've got, because they're similar to what we think you would pencil out as being the rated, so we know about what it's gonna be. The private segment is a lot harder to do, because you just, you don't have that reportability on it. So, and there's so many other variables, it can change any given day, based on, a new bank president says, I wanna be in the medium market, and so they incentivize that heavily, and it changes the whole dynamic. So, there's just so many more variables on the private side, but in many ways, it gives us a little more power, and I'm not really advocating at this point for either one, but on the private side, it gives you that power to kind of pick and choose, hey, here's what we value, here's what we like better, you know, we wanna make sure we get prepayment, or we wanna make sure we get a better rate, or, or whatever, and you can negotiate those things. And the covenants, which you kind of grazed over, but one thing that was important to us in, in a, in a previous life, is, you know, the, the bond covenants, and making sure, you know, that the debt covenants, and where we had room in, in debt covenants and not. So, with private, we have the ability to basically negotiate that, where in the public, it's a little bit more, a little bit more structured, so...
Yeah, as far as, because when you do the covenants, you're going to the rating agencies, and you're telling them, these are the covenants, these are the credit, and they turn around and decide whether or not I expect you guys to be a double A two credit if you did go, but still, they debate, and once you've set that, then you're pretty well locked in, because bond, to get anything to change, you gotta get fifty-one percent of bondholders to approve, and you're never gonna get fifty-one percent. Whereas if you decide you wanted to change a covenant after the fact, you go to your local bank, whoever was the buyer, and it's just saying, hey, we'd like to restructure it, and usually, they're willing to, to sit down and discuss it with you.
Yeah.
I flipped down here, I don't wanna get lost into it, like, obviously, a bank loan has less cost, and, versus a bank loan, I just labeled out the majority of these costs associated with it. And because of timing, and it gives you more flexibility, I'm recommending that you go for with a, a direct placement loan, or direct placement with the bank. And with that, that allows you to at least very quick turn around, we can lock in interest rate quick, so we're also not taking it to short risk, and we're able to make sure that your prepayment penalties are something that we can negotiate, that you feel comfortable with. If you decide, I know, we can also ask for two options, if you want, is that we could go ahead and say, by the way, would, would your rate change for fifteen million, or would it stay the same for nine and a half? If it turns out that they give an extremely attractive rate, you might say, jump on it, or you might say, nah, let's just stick with the nine and a half million. That option will be yours. The only issue becomes, is that we still have to get this thing done by September, and that's one of the reasons the bank loan is, is attractive, it gives you the flexibility that you need. But if you decide to go ahead and put that option in the RFP, then you need to modify, or make sure that your trim noticing has the higher millage rate of amount. And I hope I didn't go too fast on this, but or go too deep. Any questions?
Any other questions? Comments from staff, or questions for staff?
Well, I do have one question. Assuming we go with the private placement, and we do is nine and a half million, and we're going to get back a significant amount from Florida to three point six...
Yes.
How is that gonna affect, or is that affected by any prepayment penalty?
Well...
Being we're not closing the loan, but we're, we're paying it down substantially.
Well, it, once again, if you get that money, that's absolutely terrific, that you're getting that type of money.
Yes.
Is that, what my recommendation would be, is that you... What my recommendation would be is that you set that aside, because you have at least the opportunity to use that money to purchase more land. Like I said, if it got to the point where you guys tell me this cost of land is now 50 million, and it makes no sense, well then, you would use that money to pay down the, on the loan.
I understand.
So, the key thing is that, if you get that money, you'll hold it, because we're assuming that you're going to end up buying more land. And why, why turn around and pay down a loan, and then turn around and borrow it again?
Correct. I just wanted to clarify, because that is exactly what I would like to do. I would like to go for the, the nine and a half million, and, for the shorter term, and not, not go for the full 15 million, because of the effect on the millage rate, but have that money's available, the three and a half million, to, to buy next year. Because I think this process is going to take a number of years. So, for that, mainly for that reason, I don't want to increase the millage rate significantly and get to 15 million, even though it's going, you know, we're, we're going to run it out, so to speak.
Yes, sir. When you, when you say the shorter term, what do you, what do you?
I misspoke.
Okay.
20 years is fine by me, yes.
And, and there may be, to his, to his point, and I'll, I'll let him speak to this, but, you know, I, I would think in the RFP, we would, we would entice offers to, you know, kind of leave that a bit open-ended, because there's probably some, and again, this varies by bank and where they're at in their portfolio, but there may be some breakpoint where, hey, up to 15 years is, you know, making up a number of 3%, but if you want to go to 20, it's 7%, you know, something that's, it just doesn't make sense. So, I think we'd want to leave that door open. Do you agree with that assessment, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Until we get those bits, and there's nothing wrong with, you're going to set your trimmed in a, tonight. And as long as, whatever the debt service comes in does not exceed that, you can borrow not just nine and a half, you can borrow 10. I mean, I'm just telling that, you have options.
Yeah, because one, one of the things I was looking at when I went over our various things, our proposed rate, millage rate for debt service doesn't appear to be high enough if we go through with, with the amount we have listed there.
Yes, sir.
So it may actually have to be raised.
Right, which if you, if you decide now, do whatever you do it, that's what we have to work with.
Yes.
So...
Well, I would like it set high enough so that we can, we can deal with the debt for turnable, and that everybody knows that that's coming ahead of time.
But that's, that's what we have to do, and that's the, meaning when we set the trim, it's got to be, whatever we think we're going to do, we got to set the trim at least to that level for that debt service line.
Correct.
John College, do you have anything else to add to the presentation?
As we go through the next portion of this budget workshop, we'll need to have discussions on how y'all feel about either the nine and a half million or the full 15 million, because I will need to make a change if we go over, and, I'm sorry, we will need to make a change for our maximum millage for the INS 2018, because I've only done it at the nine and a half.
All right. And I think we can, we can have that discussion now, if that's okay with y'all. Just, if you had anything else?
Yeah, oh, I got a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
A question for you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a big proponent of no penalties for prepayment. And any, and, and I think the direction, at least this may seem to be going in, is a, is a bank loan, as opposed to bond. The bonds do not have prepayment penalties, correct?
They do.
I mean, I'm sorry, they, they do have prepayment penalties.
Yes, yes, can you, can you call?
And which, if we move for a bank loan, we can negotiate out any prepayment penalties.
Yes, sir.
So my question to you is, at least in my private sector, any, any note that I have ever negotiated has never had a prepayment penalty. Do you feel differently based on this kind of public sector money and the banks you deal with? I want to be clear on that, I don't want any surprises, because my personal experience has been, I don't have a problem finding banks to waive any prepayment penalties. And clearly, I think the direction of the commission is, if there's any money left over, whether we do the nine and a half and get the grant money, and then use that, regardless, we're looking at, it's very likely that there's going to be some money left over to put back towards paying down the, the note. Do you anticipate there being any problem with getting a note that does not have a prepayment penalty?
Let's put this way, Commissioner, is that the RFP will state that the city wants the ability to prepay. I can, I don't necessarily have to have that for three years, I just kind of put that in. It's like, you can get anything if you're willing to pay for it, and that's ultimately it.
Well, well...
Let me, let me explain, is that you asked a question, is that in today's market, you're asking banks to lock in interest rates for maybe up to 20 years, which is out of their normal comfort rate. They might come back and saying, yes, I'm willing to go for that, and the rate might be two, I mean, 3%, but I want a three-year protection. So that, once again, I will present that to you. And once again, we'll state in the, the RFP that the city desires the ability to prepay from excess proceeds, because banks don't want to be refunded out after they lock it in right off the bat. Plus, it's hard to refund a GO, just telling you that.
I understand.
So, yes, there are going to be some banks that says, I can't give you a prepayment, and they're out. Other banks are going to say, yes, we can, and I have the ability to do it with no penalty from day one. All right, I'll show you that. Other ones might say, gee, here's 3%, but you got a three-year call.
Okay.
We will present that to you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Hang on, anything we have for the questions?
If we do the full amount, but we don't use, but we don't spend the full 15 million in a year or two years, if we do it over time, are we actually charged the interest on the full 15, or only what we actually borrow?
No, you're absolutely, you borrow 15 million, you're paying debt service on 15 million.
Okay.
And you can only, you should, tax council will tell you, bond council will tell you, you can only borrow what you reasonably expect to spend in three years. That doesn't mean that, gee, guess what, you had reasonable expectations that you were going to do it, but guess what, because of some legal stuff over there, this thing's dragging on for five years. That's okay, but once again, you borrowed the money, you're accruing interest on the full amount that you borrow.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Sort of, yes.
So the answer is yes, you borrow 15 million, you're going to be paying interest and debt service on 15 million.
It's not like a HELOC where we can just write a check and we pay interest on what we have.
Right.
And we can earn interest on whatever, so they send us the entire 15 million. We can earn interest, but there are some tax laws around the, the arbitrage parameters of that, and basically you can't, you can't earn a whole lot of interest on it. And you can't earn more than you're paying, in rough terms, so. I don't know, it's a law.
It never works, I try.
Yeah, it's arbitrage law, I don't, I don't fully understand that, he probably does.
Bar yourself out and get.
Yeah, basically, yeah. If only, right? Any other, any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, are, do you already have a catalog of banks that you, that would be willing to deal with us?
Yes, sir.
Do you know if there are banks that have done this type of lending before that deal with nature conservancy and are apt to encourage this and offer incentives to do things like this?
Sir, as far as the banks are concerned, they only care about one thing.
Getting their money back?
Yeah, and money paid, and that this is a general obligation of the city of New Smyrna Beach. So, you know, would you spend the money, as far as they're concerned, as long as you don't do something illegal, they're looking for the, the taxpayers to pay the debt service on the loans.
Yeah, I was just, myself thinking about, do we borrow 5, 10, 15? Going forward, will the rates go up or down? It's a gamble when we decide to borrow like that. It seems we're leaning towards the middle. And so we won't have to consider, except for the bank possibly raising our interest after, let's say we get a 20-year loan, they, couldn't, shouldn't they tell us after five years, we're going to consider raising your rate? They're not going to surprise us, are they?
It would be fixed for 20 years, and it would be paid off at the end of that. That would be the entire amortization schedule. So it would be fixed over the entire time we were paying it.
So they can't surprise us at some time and change that rate?
No, not if we get a fixed-rate loan, just like your mortgage, hopefully is locked down at a rate, and it's that rate until it's paid off. And when we're, when we're talking 20 years, that's basically the duration of the loan. We pay it off in 20 years.
But if you do, let's say that they only lock it in for 15, they're not going to tell you what the interest rate's going to be until the 15th year.
Yeah.
Because they don't know what the market's going to be, so they want to get market rates.
And I, I would have serious heartburn of leaving that kind of exposure, although at that point, we could just prepay it, but, you know, I, I don't like that. I like fixed, just like you like prepay it. I think in today's interest rate environment, getting it as fixed for as long as possible would be the, the key, so.
I mean, our personal money, it's a little different. But when we're dealing with the, being stewards of the taxpayers, I think that they fix the amount knowing exactly what we're getting into.
Well, because we're going to borrow sub, I mean, 4% would be the absolute high. I mean, I would, I'd be, if we don't get somewhere in the threes, we're, we're crazy. And maybe, maybe even sub three if we're real lucky, but, so, it can't go much lower. It can only go higher, so, yeah. Lock in all debt right now, this is the message. So let's talk about the amount real quick. We'll just kind of run, run down, take a minute or two, and give just kind of your general thought. Mike, I think you were pretty clear, you, you, you support like the 9.5 million. The idea is take the 3.6 million, use that for the next purchase. Acknowledging that if the next purchase is, we stumble into some bigger parcel that is another seven or eight million, we'll be back here again looking for either a bank or, we'll have to go through this process, but is that, is that what I heard you say?
Yes, because I'm really concerned about the overall military.
Agreed.
And, and that's why I don't want to go for the 15 million. When we have, we know we're going to spend 15 million sooner or later, but I don't want people to start paying now the debt service for monies we might not need for five or six years, which I think is a real possibility.
Okay.
On prepayment, I would be comfortable with a penalty for prepayment of three to five years. That wouldn't bother me, and that may save us a little bit of money. But definitely the 9.5. And, you know, basically what I was looking at, to carry our existing debt is point, is 0.18, and the turnable, if we go with the 15, or the 0.169 mil rate increase for that, that comes to 0.3496, which is higher than we have proposed at this point. But I would be comfortable with that.
Okay. Mr. Sax, what are your thoughts on the 9.5, 15, just borrow the 5.4? What are your, what are your thoughts, what do you think?
Initially, I was hopefully wanting to borrow the least amount. I'm becoming more comfortable with the middle-of-the-road 9.5.
All right.
As, as Mike said, the, the, the burden to the taxpayer was, was most important to me. It's great to do a wonderful thing like this, but to overburden the taxpayer, I'm sure we all care about that.
I, we all pay taxes.
I hope we do.
Chris Wigger?
So there's two options, I think. You're talking about, if I understand, we're going to borrow 9.5 million, we're going to get a grant for 3.5. So essentially, we'll have that 3.5 left over when all is said and done as to go after any land acquisitions, let's say, within the next year. We have a total of getting another 5.5 million, which would have been the total of the 15 to go after. And what you're feeling is, is we don't know where we're going to, you don't want to tax the taxpayer for that total 15 million, when we don't know what we're doing with that money yet. And that's a valid point. My question is, what is the, Mark, what is the cost of going out and having to secure new loans?
Fifty, fifty thousand.
In the future, so for example, two, two, three years from now, and I don't expect you to have the number, the exact numbers, but my question is, it's hard for me to answer that question until I know what the cost is if we went out and borrowed, if we, if we created a note on that 5.5 million that brought up the difference of what we're not locking in now. What is the general fees on a 5.5 million dollar note?
I mean, I would love to be able to guess what that rate is going to be. All I can tell you right now, we're at fairly historical lows again. But we've been, of course, we've been saying we've had historically lows.
Well, I'm not talking, oh, Mark, I'm not talking about interest rates, I'm talking about the fees of a 5.5 million dollar...
The fee is to a point where it's about 55,000 in, in additional cost of issues. Because if we go just 5.5, you're not going to do a bond issue for 5.5, you're going to do another bank loan. The cost would be about 55, maybe 60, who knows by the time you're ready to do it. But incrementally, as far as really, for these type of transactions, that's pretty doggone cheap.
Okay, so comparing the 50, 60, 55, 60,000 dollars to, and those additional fees that would be put on to the taxpayer, as opposed to not being put on, but paying for that full amount and having it available. I have to chew on that.
It's a, it's about 0.1 on the millage rate.
Can anybody spitball what, you know, at, at picking an interest rate, what the, he knows where I'm going with this.
Yeah.
What, what the interest we're going to pay over, let's, let's say, three years on the whole 15 versus nine and a half million, or does it, is it greater than 55K is the question?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's...
That's what I'm asking, exactly. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. While he's, while he's doing that, I don't, make you do math on the spot, it's tough. That's why I didn't sign up for it. Commissioner Hartman, vice mayor.
You know, when we went out for this referendum, we clearly stated it was going to be 15 million for up to 30 years. The voters approved that 72%. I, I don't want to piecemeal this. I mean, if we're going to do 15 million, whether we do it now or five years from now, I'd rather go ahead and borrow the money now, save on those extra fees to reissue another one in another five or six years, and we can always prepay it. If we come up in five years and we go, well, there's no more property out there, there's nothing else available, then we can look at the prepayment, and we can reduce our debt load at that time. But I, I think it's, it'd be more prudent to do the entire amount to save on the, the ancillary costs, and look at it at the end of the three or the five years. I, I don't have a problem with the prepayment, you know, at three or five years. I think it's going to take us that long to figure out what we're actually going to end up doing. I'm afraid that if we put this out there at, at nine and a half, and then we find more properties out there that we need more money, and we have to go through this whole process, I'm just afraid the longer we draw this out, the higher the property values are going to go, the more we're in they're going to pay in. And I, I think that, I'm disappointed that, is that we haven't done more already. We should already have two or three properties lined up. We know what we're looking to do, we know what, you know, the area that we're looking at. I don't see this taking us, you know, more than three or five years to get this done. I, I mean, we were pretty clear as to what we wanted to do. The voters were clear on what they were happy with. What they agreed to was the full 15 million for up to 30 years. I, I think we should do the max, and, you know, then we can refund it later.
Okay.
To answer your question, at least if I understood it correctly, is that if you just pay interest only on the full 15 million, then you're going to be paying over the three-year period about a million four twenty, well, a million four fifty-eight. Versus if for nine and a half million, that same period at the same interest rate, it would be 923,000. So the difference for three years is close to around 921,000 dollars more in interest during that period. Keep in mind, though, you'd be able to at least have another 6 million you're investing. So I'm not taking into account any type of investment there.
Right. Which, our policy though, I mean, our, our investment policy is to buy gold almost, so it's, the returns wouldn't be phenomenal. So, so that's the, that's the flip side, is do we pay 55K in a couple more years to save 921K if it takes more than a couple of years? So, I, I will, I will tell you, Vice Mayor, I was, I was initially sitting right, right where you are. My thought was, this was the plan, let's just go execute the plan. My, where I'm at now, though, is... My, where I'm at now, though, is, I think, given another, we've got a lot of transitions in place, and you know, we've got to have a whole other discussion about the, the budget coming up, but I would like to see us take, I don't know that we'll be able to spend three, you know, find property and spend three point six million over the next year, I mean, I genuinely don't, at the rate we're going, we won't. So I would like to see us take the time, get this property dealt with, and then work on other elements of the budget, let John and Kyle and the team, you know, go, go through this with a fine tooth comb, and hopefully there may be other, other offsets that are in place, by the time we get to future years, our existing debt will have gone down even a bit more, and it might help, help offset as we layer in more millage for the additional five point five million that we would borrow. I don't think it's likely, we, we spent a lot of time talking about the prepayment, I don't think it's likely we'll be prepaying that additional three point six million that we get out of this one, I hope that we get that utilized quickly, but past that, I mean, I don't see other big chunks, so it's, it's going to be small things, it's going to take a lot of time, you know, I, I don't know, so I'm, I started where you were, but I'm now inclined to say we'd go with the middle of the road, we don't put this, you know, million dollars in interest at risk, and if we have to, we spend the fifty-five K. And worst case scenario, we find then, you know, the day after we issue this, we find the, the perfect piece of property and it's five point five million, we, you know, it costs us fifty-five grand, and I, I'll, I'll pay that to not risk, risk nine hundred and twenty thousand, and that's what I would do if this were my, this were my personal money, that's the decision I would make, so that's where I'm at.
Yeah, just, just one other further comment.
Sure.
If we do go with this, this particular plan, and we find we need additional money, we might be able to save some of that fifty-five thousand dollars by just refinancing or redoing the loan we have.
Yeah.
Might cut down the overhead costs.
Possibly, depending how soon it is with the prepayment, but.
Right.
Yeah. So.
Just if I may, one, just one comment that, on a side note, the three point five million, it would take about six months to get reimbursed from the state, so just keep that in mind, and also, when we get reimbursed from the state, you will have four million dollars available to purchase any other properties, because we're buying, we're borrowing nine and a half million, they're giving us almost three point five, so you got another five hundred thousand on top of the three point five. So you have four, four million available within six months after, I guess, we initiate the, the actual bond. So the staff, initially, the staff was recommending the, the nine point five million rather than the fifteen.
Okay. I, I think I heard general consensus, there was, I think, at least four of us that were kind of saying the same, the same thing, do we need to make emotionalness, or we'll just really roll into the next, the next resolutions really where we'll codify that, but you've got enough direction to make the change, or whatever you need to make.
For our special meeting, I've already got it in there, a staff recommendation of the nine point five, so we're good to go.
Okay.
The, will, will we discuss what the millage rate has to be at that time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the whole, that's the whole meeting. Any other discussion on this item, yeah?
Are we aware of any properties that are out there now? I mean, at one time we were looking at Ellison Acres, you know.
We were looking at Ellison Acre, and then somehow we were informed that they are not interested anymore, so we keep hearing different stories on it. That's the only property that I was aware of that it might be available at that time.
Well, let me, let me clarify something, I think that there's, aside from Ellison Acres, there's some, to the west of Temple, across the creek, that is, I believe, not what Ellison Acres was referred to as, but that piece of, that undeveloped property from forty-four on the Turnbull Creek, the backside of Temple to Jungle Road is undeveloped. I believe that that was not what was in question, that there was interest by the Ellison Trust, is that still, what, what is, what is your understanding?
I have to go and confirm, Ryan, do you have any other information on that? No?
Okay, that's fine, I, we don't need to get into this discussion right now.
I mean, it's important. If you're going to borrow the nine and a half million, you're going to commit it in the next three or four months, and these properties become available, you're basically going to say, well, we can't do anything because we'll have to wait for six months before we get any more money, you know, we'll have to wait till we get the state's reimbursement, or we'll have to go back out for another loan and pay the fifty-five thousand, that's, I think it's, I mean, we would be much better off to look at the entire amount and actively look for properties now while we can. I know there was two pieces of property south of forty-four, that I was at a meeting and but, and they said, we're interested in selling, you know, so I know there's properties out there, I don't know why we haven't started lining some of those up. I mean, you, you're putting handcuffs on us by tying, by limiting the amount of money that we're going to borrow, now you're handcuffed, so I thought we were here to buy conservation land along the Turnbull Creek, to protect it and the habitat, but, all right, I'm done.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Just briefly, is I have developed a work plan that can be followed through, so we can get these, these additional properties lined up, and my understanding is, discussion on that I will ask to be held on.
We'll take a, we'll adjourn, the next meeting starts at six o'clock.
Budget workshop is still part of this, so, so did the budget workshop to start the special meeting yet?
The budget workshop is a part of this, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Those are real quick.
Okay.
So as we've now moved on from the June twenty-fifth budget workshop, taking into account everything that's been provided, we are up now to a total citywide proposed nineteen twenty budget of sixty-four million, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. There's basically two things that have brought it to this point, utilizing two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars of police impact fees to purchase the four vehicles for the approved four corporal positions, so that's now been placed in the budget, and then also four million dollars for the Turnbull Creek land acquisition, taking the five hundred thousand dollars of the excess nine point five million staff recommendation, and the three point five million reimbursement from the Florida Trust. So that's where we bring, come up now to the, the new sixty-four million dollar budget. The capital outlay, that has not changed except for the two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar, the four police vehicles utilizing police impact fees, and the same with the capital improvement project, we added four million dollars to what you were previously provided for the Turnbull Creek land acquisition. And also, we've updated down there the citywide debt, we've increased it by nine point five million dollars for the overall Turnbull Creek option one of the nine point five million issuance. At this time, staff has built the budget based on a millage of three point eight four one six. We've also taken into account some reassignment of fund types, the golf course was, in the current fiscal year budget, a enterprise fund, it's now part of the general fund, the same with the Brandon Civic Center and Live Oak. There has been some discussions regarding the airport, stormwater, and building and inspection fund, I just want to, you know, somewhat state, it is management's decision on the fund type, and looking at everything with our, our, our current auditor, and also when we were going through our audit RFP, we asked several questions regarding how we assign our, our various fund operations, fund operations, specifically airport and stormwater. It is appropriate the way they are currently placed, if, if the commission, the city manager, or even me as a finance director thought that they could be realigned to be an enterprise fund, I have no problem doing it, but there is absolutely no reason for it not to remain where it is. It's completely transparent, I'm able to, you know, provide everyone with what are our revenues, what are our expenditures, what are our, our debt, none of these funds have any debt, our fixed assets, et cetera, so in my opinion, we're being very transparent with the remaining funds that have been discussed with potentially moving being the airport, stormwater, and building inspections, and they're completely fine to remain where they're at. Sanitation, last month, y'all agreed to, you know, to increase the waste pro contract up to three percent, that's not been settled, but there's no proposed increases from staff for the, the, the charges for service for sanitation pickup, as when we went with the new waste pro contract, at that time, we had increased our rates ten percent to the twenty-one fourteen, so we have another year left on the current rate. On stormwater, per your code of ordinances, you know, there's a, an annual adjustment of the fees, and in the last twelve months, per the index that we're to utilize, we've seen an increase of one point eight percent, so that would translate to a, roughly a two dollar annually increase, meaning, and it rounds up to the nearest whole dollar, so our annual fee for stormwater would go from ninety dollars a year to ninety-two dollars a year. On our citywide budget, you can see from two thousand and eleven to twenty twenty, we have had an increase overall, and the citywide budget is in the lighter, lighter of the two greens, and you can see that in two thousand and fourteen, we started to see that annual spike in our overall citywide budget, that is primarily related to all of our capital projects that we've done, you know, we've done extensive capital projects here in the last seven years, which is attributed to our, our growth in our citywide budget. And you can see overall, in the darker green, our citywide debt has stayed the same, we've had some refis in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, but yet, it's, it's been rather stable, so we've not really seen any increase. Our employee count, if you go in two thousand and twenty, we're projected to have two hundred and forty-eight employees, you can see that we're now at roughly the same employee count that we were in two thousand and seven, you can see during the recession where we, you know, we cut back our staffing levels, and we've now, since two thousand and thirteen, steadily brought it back up to the levels that we were in two thousand and seven. The green represents the general fund, the red, or orange is fleet, it's our internal service fund, and other would be stormwater, sanitation, golf course, et cetera. The same with our employee budget, you can see that since two thousand and eleven, you know, we've, you know, we've increased, as I just stated, our employee count, but we've, we've also been stable in our, our raises over the last few years, in the last few years, we've averaged, you know, back in two thousand and ten through two thousand and twelve, we saw a zero percent increase in our salaries, and then from two thousand and thirteen to nineteen, we've seen roughly a three percent annual increase, there were a couple of years it was only two. So, so this growth in our employee budget is related to a very, you know, stable, you know, annual increase and ramping our employee count back up. Fund balance available, this is all of our available fund balance by fund, so when you look at this, I want to just definitely point out, when you, you look at the general fund, that eight point one million dollars includes the roughly five point nine million general fund reserve, our twenty-five percent reserves, so, you know, so you got to take that into account when you look at this, but overall, you know, the city is sitting on roughly twenty-eight point six million dollars of available fund balance across all fund types. So as we go into the general fund, the overall purpose of this evening is, you know, for this workshop, and then as we go into our special meeting right after, is we have to set the maximum millage of both our operating millages and our debt service millages, this is to be in compliance with Florida statute two hundred point oh six five, which is our truth and millage, or, or trim, and this must be settled this evening, because we must report it to the property appraiser within thirty-five days after the official receipt of our preliminary taxable values. So on the general fund analysis, and I apologize, you know, on my screen upstairs, it definitely doesn't look like this, so I don't understand, you know, the shading, so I'll make sure I provide you a nicer looking copy of this, but what this chart is supposed to represent, because it looks very busy here, and again, I apologize, but as we look from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and eleven, left to right, what that lighter shade of green there shows is what our taxable value is, there is a correlation difference in our budget, general fund budget is in the, you know, the roughly twenty to thirty million range, but our taxable value is in the billion range, so when you look at that light green on the left there, that represents roughly one point four or five billion dollars of taxable value, okay? Then the, the darker green there, that's our tax levy, so this year, we're proposing roughly a fifteen point one million dollar tax levy, and the prior year, our tax levy was thirteen point seven six five million, and so that goes across there, and then our total budget, the, the, the orange, or somewhat orangish-yellow, that represents our general fund budget over the last ten years, so the, the thirty-one million, four eighty-two, that is the, the total general fund budget proposed for next year, which includes the general fund, the golf course, and the Brandon Live Oak Center, and that's where we've been over the last ten years. What is our millages been every year? You know, we always talk about the rollback versus our final millage, so you can go in and see that the lighter of the two greens is our rollback millage, the darker is our final millage, so except for two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, since two thousand and thirteen, our rollback, I'm sorry, our final millage has always been greater than our rollback, so historically, you know, we've always gone above rollback in the last ten years. What this slide shows, it's our net change in our tax roll since two thousand and eleven, so from two thousand and nine to two thousand and thirteen, we saw a decrease in taxable value of twenty-eight point seven seven percent during the recession, from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty, our, our tax value has increased sixty-eight point seven three percent, however, overall, since two thousand and nine, it's only increased twenty point one nine percent, so this growth that we've seen from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty is attributed primarily to new growth, remember that, you know, the homes that, you know, did lose that forty-nine percent of taxable value during the recession with a three percent annual increase, it will take roughly twenty years to make up that lost value. So we've been able to attribute our, our growth in our tax roll primarily, as I said, to new growth. new growth. Our taxable value, there again, there it shows you. It shows you that growth from 2010 to 2020 of our taxable value. And you can see the same with the darker, the two greens. Our ad valorem has increased steadily since 2013. And again, our ad valorem is directly related to the capital projects that we've done. We've paid for a lot of capital projects through debt, but we've also paid for a lot of capital projects and capital outlay through direct cash purchases. What is our property value broken up by class? When you look at this and you see that our residential properties make up 82.83%, that is very good. That shows you that we are not solely reliant on residential properties like other local municipalities that are in the 94, 96% residential versus 4% to 5% other. So, we're very lucky there. Median house sales, in 2011, the median house sale here in New Smyrna Beach in area code, or zip code 32168, was $149,500. In 2020, the average residential house sale per Zillow is $228,000. So, you can see the difference from the recession period to the growth period. So, we definitely are making headway in our home prices. Property tax, this year, with our general operating and our 2005 debt service millage, our total city millage for the year was 4.1755. With the proposed, because of the 9.5 million issuance of the new debt service, which we've put here a millage rate of 1.8, which is higher than Mark's presentation here, which says 1.1670, we put the 0.18 in there, not knowing exactly what our millage rate would be, I'm sorry, our interest rates would be, which would then be attributed to what the millage rate we would have to charge to cover our principal and interest. So, we put a little bit of additional in there. And when we come back to select the bank August 13th, we will know what our millage would have to be to cover that principal and interest. So, if we take all of the staff recommended millages, what would our total estimated tax bill be for that average $228,937 home? The tax bill at 95% would be $3,202.21. That's an increase over last year of $56.85. The New Smyrna difference is $38.32. Of that $38.32, $30.60 of it would be to cover the new INS 2018 debt service. So, where do we rank amongst the other municipalities here in Volusia County? So, these are all preliminary numbers. This is the only city on here.
John, real quick, let me go back to that last thing.
Yes, sir.
You said $30.62 would be...
$30.60 of it is attributed to the new NSB INS 2018 debt service.
Nine and a half million.
Yes, sir.
Over 20 years at three something.
I used a millage rate for next year of 0.18%. So, until we issue the RFP and we know exactly what the interest rates will be, I put in here a little bit extra, just in case the interest rate comes in higher, and our millage rate would need to be 0.172. So, I'm just going high.
And I'm working totally off memory here, so correct me, somebody, if I just messed up. But out of my head, I thought $27 was what we were saying it would be for the average home value, which this is, for the whole 15 million. Where did I, what am I missing?
No, sir.
Did I misremember that number?
Yes, sir. If we go back to what was prepared, I can pull it up here.
All right. If I'm just misremembering, that's fine, I'll look at it later.
So, the comparison of proposed property taxes on here are, as I said, staff recommended millage rates to their commissions, with the exception of Daytona Beach shores. They have already passed their maximum millage at the 5.23. So, you can see that from this list, we are currently the second from the lowest millage rate, DeBarry, being 2.9247. But I just want to say that we are not apples-to-apples with DeBarry. DeBarry actually has a special assessment for street lighting and road resurfacing. So, they have additional millages that they assess their property owners for other services. Just going through the special revenues real quickly, we've already spoke on the stormwater, but part of the increase of that fee will help fund the Corbin Park historic West Side and the reasonable assurance plan projects for next year. We have available next year $111,000 in our special law enforcement trust. There's no recommended appropriations at this time, and we'll be discussing that August 20th. Same with airport. The airport brings in roughly $3 million from gasoline, aviation fuel cells, rental for their hangars and aprons. And this is just a highlight on their expenditures. These are the major capital outlay projects that they're planning to do next year, totaling a little under $1.5 million. We have monies available in our impact fees. As I stated, with our police, we're utilizing $224,000 to purchase four new vehicles for corporals. Fire and parks have no recommended appropriations at this time. And in our transportation impact fee, we're looking next year to utilize $545,000 for our Station 50 traffic signal and the crosswalk warning signals. In our building and inspections, in speaking with the department, we're looking that our overall permits will remain the same for next year. So, we're looking at roughly a $2.9 million revenues from next year. And we're still looking at some GIS software within the department, and they're also funding their portion of the MUNIS upgrade. The parking fund, next year, we brought on the new Swoop boat ramp, so we're looking to bring in roughly a million dollars for our parking fees next year. And so far, we have a Nestor Street extension and the acquisition of a small SUV. And we'll be discussing in more detail, August 20th, additional parking projects that could be completed. The same with the CRA. We have some money left over from our old CRA, and this is shown here as the new CRA funding for next year. And again, we'll be discussing projects for prioritization on August 20th. As we go into our debt service, we have a few debt services here. We have the Islesborough 2017. We have our stormwater, which is our state revolving loans. Then, we have our capital improvement note of 2014 and our capital improvement note of 2018. All of those are funded from, with the exception of the state revolving loan, those are funded from the general fund. Islesborough is funded partially from the general fund and the special assessment, because the debt service on the Islesborough to the UC is a shorter duration than the assessment. So, the general fund would be reimbursed over the time on Islesborough. But I also want to point out that the voted debt service of 2005 and 2018, that is for debt that was voted on by the voters. On our capital projects, I have, as I stated at the beginning, on our Turnbull Creek, I put in there for next year's budget roughly $4 million for additional land acquisition. And again, we don't know parcels to acquire, so that's why we put "to be determined" August 20th. And I hand it out to you because the list is just too long for Fund 302. I did hand you just an update this evening of the capital improvement projects that we can look at. And again, everything that's in there has already been committed by the commission from prior actions, but we'll be looking at additional prioritizations for our future years on August 20th. On our proprietary funds, I believe that I've already covered our revenue base, but I do want to point out that through our ISBA, we're taking on April 1st of next year, 2,100 new customers from the county. So, I've budgeted 1,000 of them for six months, because we're only going to get partial funding from those 2,100 customers for six months. The other six months is being paid directly to the county, and we're estimating roughly 400 new homes to come online next year. Primarily, within sanitation, almost $6.5 million of the annual budget is for contracted service from either Waste Pro or the landfill tipping fees. The Marina, it's self-sufficient. They bring in charges for service from their boat slip rentals. And next year, we're looking at $200,000 in intergovernmental grants to help with the completion of the mooring field project, if that goes forward. And we're utilizing $256,000 to help pay for the mooring field, if that does go forward. But it's in the budget for $456,000 and a restroom facility upgrade of $20,000. And then, finally, on our proprietary funds, we have fleet. So, that $953,000, that covers the entire labor, materials, parts, and fuel citywide. So, in summary, the budget that was provided to y'all when we met two weeks ago is based on a 3.8416. That is an increase of 7.21% over the current rollback rate of 3.5832. The required debt service for the 2005 millage would be 0.2981, which is a 12% reduction from 2019. And right now, we've, being conservative, setting, recommending the millage rate of 0.1800 for the Turnbull Creek. That would bring a total city millage of 4.3197 required for 1920, which is higher than the 4.1755 in the current year, but that's taking into account the Turnbull Creek. Stormwater would be going to $92 annually, maintaining the current sanitation rates for our customers. So, where does that leave us moving into August 20th? Not all of the state revenues have been provided by the state yet. Their fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th. So, the staff at Tallahassee has not completed all of that yet. I've stated, with all the changes that have been made, whether for auditor recommendations or staff recommendations, we need to look and update our cost allocation and direct cost methodology. We've got to look at our project prioritization. Currently, I only have a 12-month capital improvement plan. So, after the August 20th workshop, I hope to develop a five-year capital improvement project plan. And then, fund designations. As your finance director, I believe that what we've done so far in terms of moving the golf course and the Brandon Center into their own fund under the general fund is the right thing to do, the appropriate thing to do. I think all the other funds that we spoke about at the beginning are completely okay remaining the way they are, unless I provided different guidance. So, this evening, as we wrap this meeting up, then that will help set what our maximum millage is that will go on the trim notice, and also that we have to set our two public hearings in September, which are currently scheduled for September 11th at 6:30. And the second public hearing is set for September 24th. As a reminder, the September 11th meeting is a Wednesday, because it conflicts with, we can't conflict with either the school board or the county when setting the tentative millage, and we would conflict. So, that's why it will be on Wednesday, September 11th. With that, I will end with, if there's any questions.
Ken, if you'd just go back one slide to 35, just to leave all that information up. So, Commissioner, the next meeting is when we're actually going to set all of those. Is there a staff preference? Do we need to have the debate and discuss this now, or adjourn this meeting and discuss it during that meeting? I'm a little confused why there's two, to be honest, but what do we do here?
Up to you all. If you want to have a discussion, that's fine, but save your voting for the next meeting, or you can do it all at the next meeting.
Historically, we've done it during this meeting, but we can do it.
Okay. All right, then let's...
Usually, the second meeting was just a formality vote.
Okay, got it. All right. Questions for staff or comments? Mike, go ahead, I know you're, he's got his calculator.
Oh, I'm waiting for the next meeting.
Well, so, we're going to do, so we're going to, we can do it either way. My thought would be, let's talk about it, let's get through all the, where we're all at, what we think. And then, the next meeting is really just the formality of adopting the resolutions. At that point, it should be fairly, really, we're just voting at that point. So, that meeting's going to be very short. This one is going to be longer.
I pass. And I'll speak in a moment, I'm still calculating.
All right, he's still calculating. Anybody, anyone want to lead off?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if nobody else has anything.
All right, go for it.
I have heard, just from a few residents prior to this meeting, their concerns about the millage. And my first question would be for John. We did look at a list of the 16 cities, I think it's 16, right? And their millage rates proposed. Have you calculated the possible increases that they would see, might see compared to ours?
No, sir. I did not look to compare what your current millage is to proposed millage.
And comments that usually come, and I'm guessing that my colleagues may have gotten those, "Why are our taxes going up, and what are you doing with the money?" Well, from what I can see is, hopefully, we're spending the money on necessary things that increase the quality of our life, lifestyle, and enhance our welfare generally, paying off debt, and the necessary capital improvements that we need going forward. But people still always ask, "Why are you raising our taxes?" I can see that we are growing. And I used to be under the impression that growth brings more tax revenue, brings more or less taxes, because people assume that more taxes are coming in, they should pay less because there's more growth. It seems that there's a body of proof that growth increases your taxes, because you have to provide more services for the growth. Is there anything that we can do to assure our residents that these tax increases are necessary? You know, when you and I in college first sat down, I said, "We're going to the rollback rate, right?" And you said, "Of course, no, we cannot." And so, realizing that, and looking at what, hopefully, we're going to pay for, it seems in line. But I still wonder, will there be people out there who will still say, "What are you doing with the money? Why are we paying more?" Are there any clear answers that you can provide tonight in a short way?
Well, one thing I can state is that in next year's budget, we have over $1.3 million in capital outlay. We have another $550,000 in capital improvement that is directly funded by the general fund. So, we have roughly $1.9 million in overall capital outlay improvements being done through the general fund. So, that is funded through our taxes. We've budgeted increases for salary increases, so that has a cost. We're still under negotiations. We're still under negotiations with the three bargaining units, so I really don't want to say what we've, we've done there. But, you know, we've, the cost of fuel has gone up. So I, I can tell you, as I met with the mayor this evening, is that, you know, when you look at our overall cost, you know, the department, let's just use the sports complex, they have no real control over salary and benefit line code. They have no control over our insurance increases. They have no control over, you know, our land lease with the airport. They have no control over our capital equipment leases. So when you looked at it, you know, they roughly, the sports complex only has less than $40,000 that, that they directly can control. So I can tell you that when I looked at, and I met with every director, there is very little leeway without cutting things like, you know, travel or saying, you know, you know, only drive your vehicles on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you know? There, we're at the lowest levels we can without affecting services.
Yes.
And in addition, we, we have three new firefighters, including in this budget as well, so. And, and other positions that we have added based on staff level, like such in, in finance. I think we gave you a list of, of items that were included in this budget, and they added to quite a bit. I mean, our goal initially, I mean, we would like to even go below the, the rollback. But as you look at the budgets in deep, and your needs in, in capital improvement and capital projects and personnel, it's.
All right.
Yeah, and just quickly, let me just finish. For the police department, we certainly do need more personnel. We will have the funding if, let's say, we can hire three or four more police personnel.
We have to provide the funding. Right now, I think the chief has eight in the pipeline, if I'm not mistaken. And so if there is another four coming up, we have to go and, and get that out of the reserve.
And just one more thing with your patience, the mooring field has come up as a hot topic. And that's about almost $500,000 excluding what we had already paid for the study. If we omit that at this point.
Unfortunately, and I think I, I, I made a mistake, and I, when I sent you the email, the, the budget for the mooring field is coming out of the City Marina. And City Marina is not coming out of the general fund. So it would not affect the, the budget whatsoever.
To just add to one thing, and I'll let the other commissioner speak, but one thing I've asked, I've asked for just before this meeting, so it hasn't been provided yet, but is the, the direct answer to your question. And that is a walkthrough from last year's budget and actual to this year's budget and actual, that shows here are the one-time items that we're not going to spend again, and then here's what's being layered in that's new additional items. There are some expenses that are fixed cost of living increases, you know, to staff pay raises, contracts go up, our, our rate that we pay for sanitation, all those things go up, and we have some inflationary measures. And then it's all the, hey, we need to do this. So it's the upgrades to our muni system, it's the three initial firefighters, it's the, you know, all of those type items that get stacked on top. But we're going to have that before that, before the next meeting on this, we're going to have a, a crosswalk that kind of shows and gives the public very clearly the answer to that question, so that they're able to see, here is why we're spending a little more. And I, I'm going to reserve my comments on whether we, where we stand on this, but we should be very transparent on that to the, to the public, so they know where the tax dollars are going.
Thank you, and I, I hope that would assure our taxpayers that we're actually spending it wisely.
There will always be some, I mean, you know, you're never going to, you're never going to please some.
I agree.
Other comments, I think you were.
No, no, I'm good, thank you.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
No, I think staff's done a good job. It's certainly, this is the max, so it may not be the final until after our meetings in August. So I'm comfortable with what staff's recommendation is for tonight.
Okay. Mr. Colode, have you finished calculating over there?
Yeah, but I wonder about it, but.
Well, we're going to try to follow.
I, I can, I can see where our debt service is going up. The voters wanted us to buy this land. I think we're going to do it in the most proper way to keep the, the debt service millage rate from skyrocketing. I am concerned about the general of 3.8416. Our rollback rate is 3.5832. If you add 3% to that, which would cover most of our labor union contracts and a little more than inflation, we should be able to get by with the total rate there of 3.6907. When you take that rate, millage rate plus 3%, or your rollback plus 3%, we should be able to function at that. Granted, we have a wish list that the staff wants, that the commission wants, that the residents want, but I think we really have to be prudent. And I won't support a millage rate of 3.8416%. If, if we care to put that as a maximum, so be it, and we can discuss lowering it later. However, I just simply can't support it.
Kevin, I'll, I'll make this comment again at the next meeting, but just to be clear what we're, what we're doing tonight, when we eventually do vote on this, is we are setting the absolute maximum. So what we're saying is, when we come back, and, and the schedule is up there of the, there's two different public hearings, there's more conversations we'll have individually with staff, there'll be an all-day hearing where different department heads are coming and presenting their individual budget line by line to the commission. That's open to the public, any of you all can attend that. So what we're saying today is that the tax rate will absolutely not be higher than this. It can always be lower, and that's the process that we go through is to figure out what it, what it will eventually be, which will be set in September, late, late September, but at the end of the second public.
September 11th and September 24th.
Yeah, September 20, 21st or 4th, whatever the date was. There's many, there's some variables we don't know on the debt service side, you heard it in the earlier presentation. We, we don't know what that interest rate will be, et cetera, so we've really kind of picked a number out of thin air. That number will be driven by actuals, that will be what it will be. And then as far as the other part, the general fund part, it will be driven by the departments, the, the conversations we have with staff and, and, you know, what, what do we want to fund, what do we want to try to trim, what adjustments do we make to that budget? So just so we're clear, if you hear a rate thrown out today, that's not what it's going to be. We'll all get that notice in the mail that says, here's what it's supposedly going to be, it'll tell you when the hearings are, et cetera. So, so that's why you hear someone like Commissioner Colodey say, I can support 3.8 today, but I won't support it. What he's saying is, that'll get me through this process, but as we go through this, if that's what the budget comes back in, what I'm hearing you say is, you wouldn't support that. So just so that's, that's clear, sorry, I cut you off.
No, no, you're good, I'm gonna, we're good, thank you.
Yes, just clarify, is I won't support it now either.
Okay. All right. So my, my thought on this is similar to Commissioner Colodey's, and I've taught to staff about this. I, I think there are, there are opportunities, you know, we, we have a wish list, I'd love to, love to do it all. I would like to see us come in a bit under the, the 3.8. I haven't done the math yet, I don't know where, where we might, you know, make cuts or reprioritize things. But I would like to see us, you know, a 7% increase is, I mean, that's a lot. I, I didn't get a 7% pay raise this year. I hope you all did, but I didn't. So, and our staff isn't, many of which are New Smyrna residents. So I, that's, that's a big increase. The past few years have been rather, rather large increases, not because we've raised the rate, but because property values have grown, gone up, and it's just, it's a rate tons of value. So I look forward to working, I can support it tonight as an absolute maximum, but I look forward to working with staff, getting a little more detail, and, and trying to figure out some things that are on the wish list that we can say, well, we're just going to put that on the five-year plan if we get to it in two or three years, if we have savings elsewhere. I'm excited about some initiatives that will hopefully save us money. I know that the city clerk has got something she's working on that will, will save money. I think every department head continually does that. If we challenge ourselves in that regard, we can even do more. So that's, that's my position. I, I would like to see us come in under that, but I can support it tonight to allow us to continue the process. But I eventually would like to see us, I don't think we'll get to rollback, but I'd like to see us come in under, under that number, if that means we have to put off a few items, and then so be it. Any other, again, the, now's the time for discussion, the next meeting, we're just going to basically call the roll on these items and be done. So if you have other discussion, now's the time for that. Seeing none, hearing none? All right, any other business in the budget workshop? None? All right, we will adjourn the budget workshop. And, okay, just powering through, do you want to?
Okay, yeah, let's, it's take two seconds.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sure. All right, we'll take it.